I'd ask that you please rise and join the committee in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I would ask that you note that the meeting is being electronically recorded. At the start of tonight's meeting pursuant to school committee policy, DBC-R, we will be conducting the budget hearing, which is an annual event that takes place in this room where the school committee has the opportunity to hear from members of the public wishing to speak to parts of or all of the upcoming fiscal year's budget and projected request from the school department. So, that's what we're doing here tonight, and prior to opening up the floor to any members of the public who will be speaking tonight, I'd ask the administration to offer a brief presentation as to the budget and an overview of the presentation. This is the fourth time that the budget has been presented to the public and to the school committee, and so it's been in a slightly different form each time, and there have been revisions, most notably the nearly $2 million in cuts that were made by the school committee on April 30th. But we're going to hear that brief presentation now, and then we'll open up the floor. That will be followed by a recess before we move on to the normal business. So, Mr. Sheen, the floor is yours.
Good evening, members of the school committee. As you see in front of you and what you will be viewing on the PowerPoint presentation this evening is the 2015 school committee's revised budget. As had been reviewed in the past, we had the edible public schools' core values, and we've looked at all the numbers and the recommendations that took us a number of hours within one week ago. With school committee vote, the administration went back and produced a revised budget, and in this revised budget, you will see the recommended reductions in this presented budget in the amount of $3,275,288 have been reduced in the budget that the school department administration presented in its first proposal. That still leaves the school department approximately $3.2 million in deficit, but you've got to remember you've just cut $3.275 million from this budget that was proposed as a needs-based budget going into the future for 2015.
Thank you, and I think if we could just do an overview of the, I think essentially, the subtotals of the three main components, I'll take that.
In this slide, it represents level funded services with regard to utilities, sewer and water, legal fees, the audit fees, and internet fees in the amount of $232,530. We also had requests, there used to be a lot more requests on that side until the school committee cut them at the last meeting, but we had the school security piece of $25,000 added to those other level-funded requests. Does anyone have any questions regarding that from the committee?
I don't have any questions, but I think in the remote transfer, we may have skipped a slide. Did we do the educational needs?
Okay. In the educational needs, we were looking at, if you recall in the first line, 2.5 full-time equivalent for elementary schools, as you recall, based on law, regulation, and contract. This was a contractual obligation. It was also a legal obligation with regard to certified teachers, so it played a role that we really don't have a choice of hiring these people in order to meet our contractual obligations as well as our mandated obligation with regard to DESC certification regulations. We also had level services with regard to the R2TT grant replacement, and then curriculum expendables and subscriptions to the curriculum, Aspen curriculum piece. In the request side, also, it was about the understanding that we enter the fiscal year, each year, knowing that we have class sizes even currently, that even one or two people added to the school district pushes those class sizes beyond our contractual obligations. If you looked at only a week or so ago, that number was $900,000 that we're looking for. We're trying to squeak by with $300,000 in additional staffing potentially with regard to class size. And if you also recall, we had the discussion with regard to looking at the much-needed assistant principals at our elementary schools, and we decided that, or you decided, and I concur, that we would probably start with one school, and that would be Thatcher, because of all of the programs out of the size of the school, the amount of students in the school, the amount of programs in the school, that have diverse programs in the school, after-school and before-school programs and so forth. So, we were looking at adding that position to Thatcher Elementary School, coming up with a total of $1,001,021,533.
Thank you, Mr. Sheen. So, that's our educational needs. We've covered our operational expenses. FY personnel slide here.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. Steps and lanes for AEA, $1,184,721, meaning if we take our existing FY '14 data and then add everyone over that's applicable, a step in a lane, the cost is approximately $1.2 million. Now, let's back up. If we don't add steps and lanes, if we just take our current FY '14 compensation, which includes salaries and stipends, longevity and so on, if we take that number and just add on 2%, it's $684,746. So, one includes the steps and lanes, the other does not, takes our existing FY '14 base salary. Similar situation, only difference is we've got other contracts. Other contracts, meaning the mechanics and the custodians and so on. $207.5K for steps and lanes, but if we take everyone, frees them as of FY '14, and add on 2%, we need about $136,000. Same situation, administrators, 2%, take the FY '14 salary, need about $87,000. And the other personnel, these are the folks that have individual contracts.
Discretionary.
Discretionary, thank you, Mr. Chair. Is a portion of the folks that fall into the other personnel. If we take those folks, add on 2%, $85,000. Last two, substitutes of $282,628. This is really just trying to say, why don't we try to bump up the budget to where maybe we really need it to be, instead of trying to scramble each year and try to find savings within the budget? And the AEA tuition reimbursement, this should be at $80,000. It's at 60, the 20 bumps it up to where it should be. So, overall, the total is approximately $2.7 million, split between the 1.7 and the 1 million.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, we now have our summary slide.
Any questions regarding the summary slide? The reality is, at the last time you showed that slide, we were looking at over 11% increase, and as you see with the reduction from the last school committee meeting, that is down to 6.4%.
And I know that we made this point repeatedly last Wednesday night, but I think it's worth reiterating that the decisions made by the school committee on April 30th should not be viewed in any way as evidence of widespread disagreement between the administration and the school committee with regard to the priorities. This is the way a budget sequence has to play out. It's the way it does play out when the administration and the school committee are working well together. The administration did an excellent job in terms of charting the road ahead and the goals that the district needs to eventually achieve, and the school committee, we fulfilled our responsibility with regard to making the revisions necessary before it takes the trip over to Park Street and to City Hall. So, that's where we are. I know there are some changes in what I think is the next slide, which is more of the summary. I believe that... Okay, so, that's the gap that Mr. Sheen was just identifying. That number, I believe, was 6.9 million the first time we convened, and is now 3.2 million. The priorities for closing the budget gap, very much in line with the core values, strengthening the organizational supports, maintaining the level services, collaborating with our bargaining units, and obviously, most importantly, meeting the needs of students. And I know there are some changes here, so I'd ask the administration to...
Please, can I handle? Thanks very much. Mr. Chair, members of the school committee. The reason why this slide has changed primarily is because there needs to be a bigger cushion. There needs to be more money, quite frankly, built into the budget, frankly, based just on learning experiences. So, let me break it out. Let me take the easy one first. The three new vehicles, $185,000, there's no change there. We're hoping, depending on how the transportation situation shakes out, two wheelchair vans and a large bus. The two wheelchair vans, the estimate, and God knows the estimates might change, but the estimates are approximately $60,000 for each wheelchair vehicle and approximately $65,000 for a yellow bus. Now, let's look at the other four items. The projected expenditures for this fiscal year for transportation is $3,348,281. The latest and greatest report for transportation, which I prepared no more than just a few days ago, Friday, shows a $3,348,281. So, that's what we use as our starting point. And now, too, this should all be the adds, which is $185,000 follows for the new vehicles, McKinny-Vento and out-of-district special education transportation. Those two numbers, 42,000 and 70,000, represent one thing, a 20% increase to what I think our worst-case figure will be as of June 30. So, it takes the existing expenses that we have through June 30 and adds on 20%. The last item are the Bloom obligations. Specifically, the contract doesn't stay the same. And I've got the figure right here, if you don't mind. I'm just going to refer to some prepared notes. And it's not a big deal, but the bottom line is, we have four different line items in our Bloom contract. We have the late bus run, we have the midday run for the pre-K kids. We also have minivans, and we have the big yellow buses. All four of those vehicles have a daily rate. All four rates have increased from fiscal year '14 to fiscal year '15. The 138-914 does two things. Number one is that it shows what those increases are to the contract. Number two, and most importantly, it plugs in 29 buses, which has been written in the contract for the big yellow buses, not the number of buses that we think we might need through the fiscal year, the number that's in the contract. And that represents the 138-914.
Okay. Again, this is a public hearing, and we will be offering the floor to the public momentarily, but I just, because this is a slight change, we'll have subsequent opportunities for the committee to ask questions and for there to be more dialogue. But I think Ms. Rose has done a good articulation as to what's changed here. And just to reiterate, because it has been discussed exhaust quite a bit, the projected expenditures for this fiscal year includes the appropriations that were necessary when deficits occurred throughout the course of the year. So, that 3.348, that includes that. As the superintendent said to the municipal council in February, when they asked, "How do we avoid these types of shortfalls?", the figure identified was 20%. So, for the McKinny-Vento, it's about a $200,000 expense projected for FY '14, and the $42,000 represents the 20% of that. So, again, I think you explained that well, but it's a topic that has a tendency to come up from time to time. So, Mr. Sheen, you had a comment.
I'll just add one thing. You won't hear this superintendent use the word cushion, as my colleague did. I don't believe in what the term cushion. The bottom line is that the increase is a result of trends that take place, trends whether it's substitute teacher trends or whether, in fact, one of the slide items is regarding the 29 bus contract that has to be done by auditors right from the start. That's added to this number. The other thing dealing with out-of-district placements and McKinny-Vento, that deals with trends, and we go back to five years when we do trends, and as it's trending up to that particular degree, that's what we wanted to make sure that the city council and the mayor and the school can be understood, that those numbers didn't come out of the air, those are the trending situations that take place.
Understood, and thank you for that comment. Okay, is that, this last one is just our timeline. We all remember April 7th, finance subcommittee convened. That was the initial presentation. April 14th was the second presentation. This hearing was advertised as is required. April 30th, we made the reductions, and now here we are at the public hearing. And so, with that, do any members of the public wish to come forward to the podium to address the school committee with regard to the projected FY '15 budgetary request? Any members of the public? In that case, I will just say that there will be another public hearing, if you like public hearings, tomorrow, and even if you don't. Tomorrow, Tuesday, at 7:00 PM at City Hall, the municipal council will be convening a public hearing on the revenue proposals that the mayor has put forth. As I said to the committee over the weekend, I did have the opportunity to confer with President Cook at the Stephen Newman track dedication. He and I had, I think, what was a very constructive conversation. We talked about sort of how this sequence will continue to play out in the coming weeks. And one of the things that President Cook and I concurred on was that we think that it would be unwise for the governmental bodies to set the precedent of offering excessive commentary on the measures that are before our respective institutions. But President Cook did understand and was receptive to my suggestion that, given the significance of the measures that are being considered by the council and their potential impact on the schools, that I would tonight be offering a motion to merely extend to the municipal council the gratitude of the governing body of the edible schools for the consideration being given certain measures in response to the state legislature's decisions regarding Chapter 70 funding. Second. Any discussion? And again, this is not necessarily a substantive comment, but the fact that these measures are being considered, they're significant, they warrant serious deliberation, and we're grateful to our colleagues on the city council for being willing to consider those measures. All in favor? All right. Motion passes. And I will communicate the action by the committee at tomorrow night's public hearing. And so, with that, I'm going to move to close the public hearing. All in favor? And we will recess for five minutes prior to the start of our regular meeting. We're going to reconvene tonight's Attleboro School Committee meeting. And before we move on to our agenda, I did want to make note that tomorrow is National Teacher Day, and is being observed throughout the Attleboro School District in a variety of ways. I know there's a lot of involvement and commitments that are being made by our parent-teacher organizations throughout the district, and we certainly want to extend our gratitude to those organizations for recognizing our dedicated educators. But in addition to that, I thought it would be appropriate to offer a motion to commend the hundreds of educators who dedicate their professional lives to the education of the children and young adults of Attleboro. The Attleboro School Committee hereby declares its collective gratitude as the governing body of the Attleboro Schools to all of our educators.
Second.
Any discussion? I hope you don't vote against. I have to say, this would be a nice one to have you. All in favor?
Aye.
And we pass that motion with gratitude and recognition of National Teacher Day, which again will be celebrated tomorrow. Okay, our next item on our agenda is, we have some special guests with us who I hope will become regular and routine special guests at these meetings because they provide a very important service to the Attleboro School District community, and that is, they are helping to strengthen and build the bridge between our school district and our alumni locally, nationally, and elsewhere. So the head of the Alumni Association is Mary Beth Oliver. And Ms. Oliver, if you could introduce your colleagues, and I know there's, I have asked you to talk a little bit about the organization and the mission and the work that you're doing, but I know there is one particular event that you're here to promote as well, so.
Absolutely. My name is Mary Beth Oliver, I'm a class of 1978. I'm co-chair of the Alumni Association along with Tammy Pay at Class of 79. She lives in New Hampshire, so she was not able to come tonight, but she often joins us via Skype when we meet in the library. We meet once a month, the first Tuesday of the month. I brought along a few of our members. Tony Rivera is going to speak about the upcoming event, and Bill Babcock was chairperson of another event that we recently hosted. What you'll get when you receive the slide, this is the takeaway that we are going to hand out at our social, but it also highlights the few events that we've done the past year or so. And it also gives you, we have a website that's linked from the high school website, so you can see pictures, and also we put up notices there when we're trying to, and that's how we connect with people when they contact us. We have them either email us or via the website. We have participated recently in the dedication of the Toz-Cassiot Field. We had volunteers who worked there and helped out as necessary. The street signs that you may see coming down Dennis Street onto Raffin-Willard and also down at Rome Boulevard and West Street, we donated those to the high school. We also, in November, organized the first annual Attleboro Community Leaf Race. We took over from the high school, they used to do a fall into leaves with the reunion service program, and that had kind of, the person who was in charge of that wasn't able to do that, so we organized that along with the Leo Club and several other groups at the school. Bill was in charge of that endeavor. We also give a book scholarship at the scholarship night coming up every year, and we have a reunion assistance committee where, when classes are organizing their reunions, if they like, we will go and help them out, so freeing them up to be able to socialize with them. We don't maintain a database of any type yet with alumni.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're working on, we're working with Mr. Murphy and the Guidance Department to assist them in coming up with a new system for that. And we also are having our third annual alumni gathering, which Tony's going to talk about.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Chairman, School Committee members, this year, as Mary Beth said, will be our current annual gathering. Last year, we had such a great time, it was held at the museum, and it went over at the museum again this year. We had a number of people that came out, and we were absolutely floored by the number of people that attended. They all had fun. Matter of fact, they lined up outside the door before we opened up the doors, that's how many we paid. We had Mr. Bray, our longtime principal here at Attleboro High, he was absolutely tickled pink, and he'll be back this year. We had longtime musical director Joseph Bono who came, a young Joe Bono, we've been knowing he's 87 years old and he doesn't work anymore. We had Mr. Marshon, Mr. Skraminski. We had quite a few of the staff and teachers that came. We had a lot of feedback from it. People enjoyed themselves that night, and people that didn't come, that heard about it, wished they had come, but they haven't become this year. So this year, we expect a huge crowd, maximum crowd. Mim Forsett, the director of the museum, has been so helpful with us. She helps us set up everything, we coordinate everything with her, she donates everything to the hall, we don't have to pay for anything. And she helps us out serving the refreshments. We have refreshments, we have cheese platters, desserts, we'll have 40-year books on display, anybody who wants to look at them. And of course, the biggest feedback that made me feel good last year were a couple of people that said, you know, I go to the reunions every five years, but it was nice to come to something like this because you also had underclassmen and upperclassmen that you hadn't seen in years, and it was a chance for them to socialize. It costs nothing to get in, and we have the oldest and the youngest alum. We take a picture of them and highlight them. Last year, it was alum from 1940, and I think Attleboro, Attleboro alum at 2008, 2006, so...
We had, we had seven decades of classes there.
So we got credit for that. So I...
I just want to tell a funny story, I usually don't do that here, I think it's funny anyway. The previous year, in 2012, I was the youngest alum for the first hour of the event, and I was, so I had my picture taken, then I was told someone from another, someone in the mid-2000s came in and I got fucked.
Oh, no.
I still haven't seen that photo, but I guess it doesn't matter.
Oh, I haven't.
Of course, you're all invited, and I know some of your Attleboro alum data's came. Last year, the mayor was there, classroom, I agree. And of course, last year...
He's older than, he would not have been in the picture, but...
No. And of course, last year, we had, many of you weren't around, maybe somewhere, but Georgie Porger, who was the talk of the town back in, oh, it'd be 50 years ago when the Beatles came out, we had the long hair, came to school in a suit, and Joe Joyce suspended him, and I think it took a couple of years by the time it got to court, and by the time it got to court, everybody had long hair, and probably the judge did too. I really felt sorry for Mr. Joyce because he was all alone, he didn't have any public support. But George Kane, he had the...
It's a good reminder to our administrators, if they have, you know, students that, you know, looking, coming in with long hair or whatever, you want to be mindful of that, that being named in a Supreme Court case.
And, yeah, he has a ponytail and a little less hair on the top, but this year, we're going to be adding to the staff, and, you know, I hope you stop by and, you know, have some fun, and looking forward to it.
And check out the website, we can probably pass...
Yeah, and I'm going to, you know, if I can leave these here, if you can help us out, if there's any store windows that you can put these out, and any place in the stores would be very great.
And I have noticed that the signage has made its way around, at least the high school, and I suspect other areas in the community as well. So, I mean, I know Mr. Rooney attended last year as well, and it really is a great event.
I'm glad you remembered, because my mind is, you know, not the greatest. Mr. Rooney, I'll tell you, he came last year, but this gentleman is Blue Pride, Mr. Blue Pride. He's such a dynamo, and I'm glad that we have him on, and I hope he stays here with many, many years.
He's a good resource for us. We know that when we have questions, he's always available. It's made a difference in kind of turning, helping to turn around the organization and get us refocused, I think.
And it's certainly, it's an ongoing project, because, you know, every year, as Mr. Clark and Mr. Lancaster well know, there's a new group of X number of graduates that are entering the alumni universe, and we, the stronger relationship the district can have with those individuals, the more likely it is that they will be able to support and help our current students, and that's something that we take obviously very seriously, and we appreciate the partnership with the Alumni Association. Do any members have any questions or quick comments for the Alumni Association? And so, May 21st at the Attleboro Art Museum?
Seven to nine, May 21st, and it'll be in the paper, I have it in Tom McAvoy's column and on cable.
Okay. Yeah, and if there's anything we can do on the district side to help promote the event or any other activities for the organization, please let us know. Before we go, I'll just say, one of the conversations that Ms. Oliver and I have had over the course of time is the number of Attleboro Schools artifacts that are in sort of somewhat state of flux with regard to their custody, but we do know where they are, which is important. And as you can see around, we are in the process of some interior decorating here in the School Committee conference room in Room 178. I had solicited comments and feedback from my colleagues on the committee earlier in the term, and one of the things that we wanted to do was to make this look like a room in which a committee that is focused entirely on students and student well-being is here. And so we are, I would say, about a third of the way done with the redecoration. That's student artwork representing all nine schools and all 12 grades, or 12 of the grades. I see Mrs. Zinni has just walked in, so I want to be mindful of, we still, we're working on our ELC representation, and we're going to get there. But one of the things that I was going to ask of the Alumni Association is if you would be willing to put together a collage talking about sort of the history of the Attleboro Schools and documenting the school system as it's evolved, and I think, I know what's in the pile, as it's called, and there should be some materials that we'll be able to use.
I should have mentioned that, that's another project that I had listed because we're, it's in a little bit of a flux right now, but Betty Ann Kahl has expertise in genealogy, she's a class of 54, and she's, she and Tony are working on that, and we will have some samples of that at the gathering.
Great.
Just a little, because we're not sure what's there.
Sure. Once we get to that point, if you're looking for a place for it to be displayed publicly that regularly televised, moved and held, we would certainly offer that to the organization, so.
And Mr. Chairman, you mentioned the artwork at the museum that night, it's the opening day of high art, and high art is, I think, a part of local schools in the community, including Attleboro High School.
Sure.
With the artwork displayed from those students, and that runs through June, so...
Great, well, that's certainly something the community should take advantage of, and again, if there's anything we can do to help promote, please let us know, so, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Our student representatives have come, and they are next on the agenda, but I think we're just going to give them a second to settle in and get the remote and who's ever in is supposed to be in. And we'll move on to our consent agenda. A motion to accept a donation in the amount of $1,000 for the class of 2014 to the track and field project at Attleboro High School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. A motion to accept a donation in the amount of $627.50 from the class of 2013 to the track and field project at Attleboro High School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. A motion to accept a donation to the class of 2014 in the amount of $270 from Men's Warehouse. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. A motion to accept an anonymous donation of two cases of copy paper, one to Studley Elementary School and one to Willard Elementary School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And a motion to accept a donation in the amount of $16.51 from Coca-Cola to Hill Roberts' Gifts Donation Line.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So we extend our gratitude to all of those who made those contributions to the school district. Okay, so our next presenters are our student representatives to the School Committee, Brandon Clark and Max Lancaster. We are, as we've already alluded to earlier tonight, approaching the departure of the class of 2014 from Attleboro High School, and so I extended the offer to Mr. Clark and Mr. Lancaster to attend, to both come to our final two meetings, and also they have a special report tonight on a recent accomplishment and a program that was executed by the Student Advisory Council with, which Ms. Singer and I had the pleasure to attend. So, Mr. Lancaster, Mr. Clark, why don't you, why don't we do the spotlight events, then you can go right into the SAC report?
All right. We'll quickly run through the spotlight events. On May 14th, 2014, we have the Brennan Middle School Spring Choral Concert at 6:30 PM. That is a concert for students in the middle school grades to share songs from their spring semester choral rehearsals, so I would imagine that they've been preparing these in their classes, and I would like to extend the, what's the word?
Invitation.
Yeah, I'd like to extend invitation to help us appreciate that.
I'll just speak loudly.
There you go, perfect.
So the very next day, on the 15th, is the Abacus Districtwide Barbecue. That's going to... That's going to run six thirty to eight P.M., and that's going to be in the small gym at Peter Thatcher Elementary School, and that's just some burgers and dogs to show our appreciation for our regular Abacus members. That's all we got for spotlight events this week. We'll now move on to a brief preview of what we put on last.
Friday, that's Friday.
Friday, to the class of two thousand sixteen, the sophomores. So briefly before we go into it, what we like to call is a halftime talk for the sophomores. The idea is that transitioning from sophomore to junior year, they really don't know what to expect in the later years of high school, and then, you know, thereafterwards upon graduation or whatever the case may be. So we, as the Student Advisory Committee, came up with some information that we felt was useful for the sophomore class to have, and we gave a presentation in the form of a game show, which was seniors, myself, Brandon, and another senior, against randomly picked sophomores out of the crowd, just to kind of highlight some of the things that maybe sophomores don't know yet, and then to give them some of that information. We got a couple example questions that we have, game show questions that we put up to the sophomores. So what it was, was a three-step program. We had, on the second was Assembly, which was a game show, and then coming up on the sixteenth, which is two weeks, two weeks from that Friday, in advisories, they'll be receiving a piece of literature that has information for contact for, you know, every club or activity we offer at the high school, to every sports captain or coach that we also have at the high school. And then they'll be giving a final exam on that day also, which is simply just a way of starting communication between the guidance counselor and the sophomore. The way it looks is the sophomores are asked to write down a goal that they may have, and then that gets distributed to the guidance counselors, and that just kind of is going to spark some conversation for the junior and senior year. Brandon, you want to jump into maybe some of the questions?
Yeah, sure. So first question, what if I just want the next two years to go by as quickly as possible? You'll see the trend of these questions, they basically highlight the fact that the next two years, you really got to take advantage of them and prepare for the education you'll need in the real world. So going along with that, the answer is two years is two years, whether you're looking for them to fly by or to savor every moment, you're better off staying busy. So, they would answer first and give it their best shot and go like, ah, I don't know, because they're just.
Hold on, Mr. Clark, I'm not sure that's the, I thought the sophomores, I'm not sure they would agree with that characterization.
The quality of kids that we picked made for some competition, which I think helped. It drew in the crowd a lot better.
Sure. Mr. Clark, who won the game show?
Yeah, right, yeah.
I believe the seniors.
Powerpoint said seniors, that's true. The PowerPoint made before the game show, said the seniors, that's a fair point.
So just another example, one of the questions we posed was, what is the most important year of high school when it comes to college and career options? The answer to that question was, every year is important, but specifically junior year, just because a lot of preparation needs to take place in that year, research, things like that. Another question we posed was, when should you start thinking about what do you want to do after high school? So that was kind of the theme of our presentation, was you need to start thinking about what the plan is. You don't necessarily need to have a plan, but just to start, you know, thinking and discovering things that may interest you in college or afterwards or whatever the case may be. The answer to this question was, never too early, but you're halfway there, so now would be good. Could it be a scary thought? Of course, we all see that as a scary thought at times, but there's going to be people along the way there to support you.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
When did both of you start thinking about life after high school? Or what you're looking to go forward with?
We didn't have the sophomore seminar. We were the one class.
You got a lot, you got a really lot.
That was part of the motivation.
Right, exactly, so, but seriously, thinking back, when was the first time that you actually started thinking, maybe along with you, you know, what do you, what do you want to do after?
I know, I had some experiences, I worked at Cape Girardeau over the summers, where I was just kind of building things for the exhibits and things like that, and that kind of just sparked my interest in working my hands and building things, so I think next year I'm going to be pursuing some type of engineering degree. So, I mean, I've been working there for six summers now, so six years ago about was one of my first interests, so.
For me, I sort of had like.
Don't say yesterday, Brandon.
I had the mentality that, like, it was there, but like, not really, not really there, like, it's just this far-off idea that I might get to it, I might not, but then, when I started touring colleges, like sophomore, junior, I was like, wow, this is like, I can see it, this is right there in front of me, it's, it's going to happen, I got to get my act together and prepare, so I think that seeing it was actually the spark for me.
Right, but obviously the goal here is to get them started thinking in that direction as soon as possible. That was sort of one of the motivations for putting on this presentation. And then just our five main points as we went through the presentation. The first one being, independence is coming quickly, so it's time to embrace it. There are people at Attleboro High School to talk to about, you know, what do you want to do next, what are the next steps for your life? And then, the third one being, post-high school education, college training, et cetera, whatever the case may be, is going to be more necessary now than ever before. There's nothing extra about extracurriculars, getting involved is almost a necessity these days. And then for sophomores, a good goal is instead of goal, and that's where we went with the final exam, which is going to be on the sixteenth, to get those goals out. And, yeah, that's really, that was, that's a, in a nutshell.
Excellent, excellent synopsis of a very well-executed program, and as I said, Ms. Singer and I had the pleasure to attend, and Ms. Singer, if you want to offer any comments just about.
No, I think, yeah, you guys did a phenomenal job, kept the group engaged, which is not always an easy task, and there was a lot of good discussion back and forth between the sophomores and the seniors, and I think one of the bigger, what I found really good about this was that it wasn't focused on solely college, whatever you want to do after high school, whether it be military or training, college, you encompassed all of that, so you did a great job.
Thank you. Absolutely, I would echo Ms. Singer's comments, I mean, it was a presentation geared toward an entire class of students, all of whom probably coming in with varying levels of interest in the topic, but I think because it was so engaging and because you went out of your way to be so inclusive, it really, it seemed to, from where I was sitting, it seemed to resonate, and they were, the crowds really engaged the whole time. So congratulations and thank you for your contribution. I would also just like to add that the committee is appreciative of Ms. Sawyer, Ms. Pereira, and Mr. Hodges for the work that they did in helping you to put on the program. Any other questions or comments, Ms. Tyler?
Just a comment, it's funny when Dave said that, I can't believe we're almost, really, and we got to lose you guys very soon.
One more.
You've been great, you know what I mean, and Max, and somewhere, I know Keith Rucker is smiling away. I just think it's a great service what you guys did. It's important, I think somebody with children would know this, that they don't want to hear it from adults sometimes, they want to hear it from their peers, they want to hear it from kids that are in their age groups, so to get them thinking about their future and stuff like that is just a great service, and I think the kids are going to get a lot more out of it when it comes from the student advisory than it is from a guidance council or something like that, so, again, I applaud both of you, and it's been a pleasure working with you, Max, that's for sure. And we all know that New York Yankee is going to be looking for an infield very shortly, so we hope you can do that.
No way.
If you see the check, you might.
They call that the Elbury.
Okay, so, thank you very much, Mr. Clark and Mr. Lancaster, for your work on that. Our next, our next item is in addition to the agenda at last minute, just if Mr. Parento and Mr. Rose could come on the committee, and you guys are good, you can stay, but.
Good, yes.
Last, yeah, good. Last week, the school department presented before the municipal council committee on capital improvements, and talked a little bit about the work that has been identified as part of the city's capital improvements plan, specific to the school department. The committee has received a summary of that presentation, and I believe an updated one is at your table tonight. So, Ms. Rose, Mr. Parento have agreed to a five to seven minute briefing on the capital improvements, and it's a conversation that will certainly continue in the weeks and months ahead, so.
All right, great. The focus of our presentation to the city council last week was really to focus on the urgent items identified as sort of our must-dos, categorized as urgent, meaning within the next year to two years. I'm going to briefly just hit on those items, I won't get too in-depth unless there are any questions. Starting with Hill Roberts Elementary School, and Hill Roberts and Hyman Fine actually have the same exact issue. It is the repair of the asphalt parking lot and roadways. Anyone who's visited those schools can attest to the fact that parking lots are in desperate need of course, like spalding, alligatoring, and just generally, it's in very, very poor condition. Estimated cost of those repairs is approximately one hundred thousand dollars, based on some of the pre-work that we did last summer.
Excuse me?
Yes.
It's a hundred for each school, correct?
A hundred for each school, that's correct. Moving on to Willett Elementary School, I think we've all heard the challenges with Willett Elementary School not having a designated area that has air conditioning in that building. Around this time of year, within the next, I'd say, two to four weeks, it's going to grow increasingly uncomfortable in certain areas of the building, and as you get toward the early parts of September into October, you still have that issue. We have identified at least cooling the media center as immediate urgent need, so that there is one area of the building that the students can either congregate, and also that will give us the ability to grow that media center into a computer lab, and Mr. Shien could get into that a little bit more if you'd like.
We're also looking at expanding or dividing content with some of our summer programs, instead of all, having all of them at Thatcher and some of the other places, we're looking at spreading them throughout the entire community, and so we can't do that at a place that is ninety-five degrees in the summertime, and so that one place at Willett was satisfactory, and to air condition that, it adds to that program, but it adds to the idea that we're going to be able to do some computer and technology things there throughout the course of the summer and school year.
Brandon, thank you.
Moving on to Brennan Middle School, and surprisingly enough, all of the issues at Brennan Middle School are the identical issues at Wamsetta School, so when I speak of Brennan, I'll be speaking of as well, about Wamsetta as well. Roof repairs, we have talked a little bit about those, we know the challenges with the waterproofing of that tower and the waterproofing required at some of the eaves and some of the valleys that are surrounding the, especially the front of each building. Window repairs, you may or may not know that many of those windows are extremely heavy. The architecture fits the building nicely, they're beautiful to look at, but they're so heavy that most of those windows have failed. We have identified the parts necessary to make those repairs. We would make the repairs in-house, but the cost of the materials would be approximately eighteen thousand dollars per school. Concrete walkways and the concrete leading into the main buildings, here is where there's a bit of a difference. Both schools need exterior concrete repair right at the main entrance. The work required at Brennan is a little bit more in-depth than the work required at Wamsetta, primarily because what you have at Wamsetta is basically surface issues, basically your standard issues that come from frost and defrost and temperature changes and ice melt and plowing and all of those items. The issue at Brennan Middle School is a little bit more in-depth because it requires the entire pad at the main entrance to be repoured because there is a grading issue there, which continues to be problematic. Does anyone have any questions? I know I'm sort of running through, so please.
This is just a brief briefing, because the presentation was just last week to go to the municipal council, and I know there were some committee members who had some questions about it over the weekend, so there will be time for a lengthier discussion in the near future.
As I said, those exact issues are also being experienced at Wamsetta. Moving on to the high school, I think we're all very much aware, and we just recently reapplied to the MSBA for a, for funding for the replacement of heating in window systems here at the high school. We have all of those issues with steam that we've discussed, we've got two separate plants, both of them extremely old, with the steam plant being original to the original building, so that continues to be a challenge with steam leaks and all of the other issues that go along with that from a comfort standpoint. Replace the chiller, we have, we have air conditioning primarily in one area of the high school, that is the resource center. The chiller that cools that section of the building is original to the building, and our, the folks who are maintaining that, Jeff Rousseau does a fantastic job of doing that, but we have been notified by our service contractors, the folks that come in and do some of the work for us there, that we can expect to get maybe one more year out of that, realistically. It has well, well outlived its natural life expectancy. It's a hundred and fifty ton chiller, is a very expensive project. Tom and I met with some folks who gave us some other options for going in a different direction, for cooling the resource center, and we'll of course continue to explore those Moving on to the old high school. In fact, this is identified as urgent, but the repair year is two thousand eighteen. I'll just briefly touch on it, the window systems and exterior casings are in desperate need of repair and replacement. Ultimately, they have just outlived their natural life expectancy, they no longer provide any type of insulating value, and the window casings continue to break down as they get I think I've touched on all of the projects that we had at the city council last week, and again, I ran through this, there's a lot more to it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Yeah, if there are brief questions, I think that would be fine, but like I said, we're just, I just didn't want to let too much time go by from what the municipal council presentation was, and what the committee left to discuss.
Jason, thank you.
Sure.
First, a brief suggestion, I would like, if you have one, to talk about transportation, that we have the actual age of the bus in there, along with the miles, if you could. But it looks to me like we have, I mean, again, we have, I think, stated, these are our buses, these are the ones at Attleboro.
Correct, yes.
So we're talking about four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars between urgent and stage two, so that's basically three years. So we should be looking to spend four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a minimum at this point, and then extra years on the transportation fleet that are Attleboro owned buses.
Correct, correct, Mr. Tyler, yes.
And do we have an average age of what we're talking about, replacement from the urgent to, are they nineteen?
Well, the answer is yes, I've got a spreadsheet over here, which I can give you after the break, but the bottom line is, which I went over with Terry Edwards earlier this afternoon, the bottom line is, the most important objective for year one is to replace the two wheelchair vans and get a big yellow bus, no question about it. We can't, obviously, we can't replace all eight or nine vehicles, so we got to do it in stages, and so that's why we've got three tasks. Between year two and year three, it's really kind of a mix. All the vehicles are aging. At the end of the meeting, I can give you this, it wasn't handed in the handouts, because I received it a few hours ago, but Terry Edwards did a very, very good job of preparing a summary sheet which lists every single vehicle we have, what the current disposition is, and the bottom line is, we've got a couple of vehicles that are okay, but we've got, most of them need to be replaced, and that's why there are three applications in there.
And the administration is, has been asked to prepare a comprehensive presentation with regard to the committee's options going forward, and I know that, I believe, is scheduled for May nineteen.
May nineteen, yes, that's correct.
And so, I think that, you know, with all these discussions, like, there's a lot of context that's required, your job is to identify the price if the committee were to buy the buses, and that's, that's the price. It may be the case, as we've discussed before, the possibility of leasing buses, if we're going to go with a short-term solution, and we don't really know the direction that we're going, but that's.
Correct.
I just want to be, add that caveat, because sometimes when you just hear a sliver of the conversation, you know, folks could run off and say, school department's buying a bunch of buses. Is that where, just a last.
Again, I just can't answer your question. One of the buses that is in this proposal to be replaced is a nineteen ninety-five Chevy with over a hundred and thirty-eight thousand miles on it.
Okay, Mr. Withers.
Yeah, I was just curious about the technology piece, I know that we had talked about it's category one and not urgent, so it wouldn't be referenced today, but I just don't see it in the slides, in the spreadsheet, was it addressed in the presentation?
Sure, there are so many, there are so many items in there, but, Mr. Withers, if you turn to the last page, I believe it's on the last page, you'll see a line item that states, hold on for a moment, system wide.
It's the, it's on page two of three, system wide, last piece, upgrade school department IT infrastructure.
Got it, yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other final questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Larson?
I'd just like to thank the three of you and the chairman. I thought you did a great job making the presentation last week. I thank you for the.
And I wasn't even there, so that's the perk of being the chair. I was not there, but I.
Oh, I thought you were.
I would have done a good job, though. Well, yes, thank you very much, we appreciate the work. I mean, I'll just close the discussion with one sort of general comment. The school districts is a teaching and learning organization. That's what, that's what we're here to do, is to educate students and to put them on a path where they can be successful and fulfilling lives. We can't do that effectively unless we're sound operationally. And I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and I appreciate the priority, because I know from working with Mr. Rose and Mr. Prento, the degree to which you understand that our priority is students and keeping the teaching and learning environment where it needs to be. I do have questions for the committee, frankly, about whether or not our governmental structure is set up to have the most effective impact from an operational standpoint. We have, and I'm talking about standing subcommittees, and I'm talking about whether or not we've clearly articulated our goals in the long term, and I think these are some issues that in the coming months and perhaps short, that this committee has to really take a long look at. So that's more just sort of an FYI, but I think that, I think historically, this is something where the school committee could do a better job of providing leadership with. So I'll just end with that, and thank you very much, Mr. Prento and Mr. Rose.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our open forum, which I know some members of the public have come in since the close of the public hearing, so certainly if there was anyone who missed the public hearing, if you'd like to speak at open forum, you're more than welcome to do so. Open forum is a time when members of the public may address the school committee. Open forum is not a time for committee members to engage in dialogue with members of the public. Guidelines for open forum are available to you. So at this time, does anyone wish to address the school committee as part of open forum? Okay. That is, we will close open forum and move on to our new business agenda, and I would ask Mr. Sawyer, Mr. Rooney, and Mr. Connor, and anyone else who's here for the high school school improvement plan to join the committee. I think we've got enough, I think we're good.
There's water.
Before we move on to the school improvement plan, Mr. Sawyer has everyone's favorite part of the program, the personnel report. Mr. Sawyer?
I have five items for you this evening on our personnel report. First, I have two retirements. Ms. Connie Morris, a grade-one teacher at Hill Roberts, and Cheryl Ann Openshaw, a grade-six math-science teacher at Coolo. I also have three resignations for you this evening. Wendy Parks, a visual arts teacher at Wamsetta. Joseph Winterhalter, grade-six ELA social studies at Coolo. And Jamie McKenna, paraprofessional at Hill Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. And now, moving on to our school improvement plans, and people who watch the school committee meetings know that each year we have presentations of each of the three building levels. We've heard from the middle school administrators on April 14th, and now the flagship of our district is represented in Mr. Rooney and Mr. Connor, and they'll be discussing with us the high school school improvement plan. So, Mr. Rooney?
Thank you for having us tonight. There's a tremendous amount of work that goes into a document such as the school improvement plan, so I'd like to open, first of all, by thanking the two key constituencies that were involved in helping us put this together. First of all, our instructional leadership team, Ms. Adeline B., Melissa Blaze, Lori Carlos, Larry Carpenter, Brian Hodges, Eileen Homan, Tracy Larkin, Colleen Nestlin, Kelly Reed, Bill Riley, Brian Thompson, and Mr. Connor. They represent the various departments throughout the school. And then the school improvement, I'm sorry, the school council members, Samantha Boudreaux, who's a parent, Anne Montagno, who is dean of House One, Kimberly Rooney, who is elected member from the class 2015, Patrick Lamb, who is an elected member from the class 2016, Mr. Arthur Haypenney, who's a special education teacher, Libby Murphy-Zalinski, who's a parent, Karen Spina, who's a member of the special education department, Aaron Croto, who is elected community member, Brett Lancaster, his second claim to fame, is represented as a parent, Alan Weintraub from our mathematics department, Lucy Andre, who represents us as a parent. So the way that the process works is that we spend a tremendous amount of time looking at the previous school improvement plan, formerly referred to as ALWISIP, Whole School Improvement Plan. We look at ways that we were successful, we looked at ways that we were not successful, and we try to do what we can to put together as comprehensive of a plan moving forward that will best serve the needs of our students across the board. And so I've asked Mr. Connor to be here tonight to not only provide somewhat of a summary from where we were with the whole school improvement plan, and then some additional aspects of the process leading us up to tonight's school improvement plan presentation. I'm prepared to answer any questions, so you can stop me at any time if you need clarification, if there's anything specific you'd like to know, please ask. In addition to the ILT and the school council, the school improvement plan is crafted with a lot of input from teachers and a lot of input from our school leadership team, our content coordinators, our assistant principal for student services, Jean Hickox, and Sue Edmonds, our director of CTE. And if you've had a chance to review the document, you know that a big chunk of it is devoted to district-determined measures in one way or another. That is the big new thing from the state that is coming down on us next year, and we want to be both compliant with all the state mandates, and because we're a big school with lots of teachers, with lots of different courses, we as a result have lots and lots of different DDMs. So it's a big task. So one of our goals is to be compliant with the state and have the required two district-determined measures for every educator in the building, and that's, you know, quite a few.
Connor, could you maybe just expand a little bit of how, sort of, the under-the-hood part of the DDMs and sort of what that looks like, and what it like, how that maybe differs from how evaluations have been done in the past?
Okay. Starting in June of 2015, educators with what they call trends and patterns, which is two years of data, are going to be issued a student impact rating as part of their evaluation. In addition to being rated, you know, proficient on all four standards and an overall rating, you're going to be getting this student impact rating. In order to inform that student impact rating, we have to measure student growth, and we have to assign bands of student growth, whether it's high, medium, or low. The state does this already in our, in, well, not all M-CAS subjects, but in ELA and math. We get a growth number for students. Now, this is not a student number, it's a growth number. So it doesn't, it measures how, where you, you know, you take a kid from point A to point B, and it tries to measure that. The state has the advantage of a big cohort of kids to compare to, they have a very, very valid and reliable test that they use, and multiused data. And what the state has essentially challenged us to do is mimic that measurement of student growth in every class we teach, not just 10th grade math and ELA. So for the teacher.
That must mean that the data that would be used to make that determination has to be more comprehensive than just the tests that the state would be using, correct? I mean, is it, what is the data comprised of?
The student growth?
Yeah.
You're asking, where do they get the student growth number?
Well, when you said it's based on the data, my question is, what are the different types of data that is being, that are being used?
For the student growth numbers that we have right now, and feel free to jump in there, the student growth data that we have now is based on M-CAS data and M-CAS data award.
Okay.
And they have the advantage of, you know, measured progress, a psychometrics company to determine this growth.
We don't have a psychometrics company.
We don't, it's just us.
We should really get one.
Yeah. So what they're challenging us to do is to measure growth in each class that we teach, so, as opposed to just the M-CAS math and ELA have in producing this growth number. We're being asked to produce our own growth number for each course that we teach.
But based on what? Based on classroom observation?
Well, we can measure it a lot of different ways. No, this is something, this is based through assessment, and, you know, it could be a pencil and paper assessment, it could be a foreman's assessment, it could be a portfolio assessment. The state's giving us different avenues for us to try to measure growth.
Okay.
And the educators have responded by choosing a wide variety of ways to measure growth.
But am I correct in saying that's a significant change to the classroom experience?
Yes, I think so. I don't know, hopefully not to the classroom experience.
For the instructional experience that.
It's forcing teachers to look at things a little bit differently. I think teachers at the high school are pretty comfortable with measuring achievement, measuring how close kids get to the standard that they're trying to get to. What's different is, we're not really talking about that anymore, we're talking about student growth. So a student who has, comes in, you know, less skilled and less familiar with the content, might have tremendous, tremendous growth, but really not come anywhere close to meeting the standards, per se, NA. And, you know, the state and, and I think a lot of.
But would still be considered successful because of that growth, correct?
The teacher would be, absolutely, and the student as well.
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
Okay. Did you finish the point that you were making, because I cut you off?
I think so. It's changing the lens of how we're looking at measuring students.
Okay.
We want to focus on student growth so that the teachers can then look at their practice, look at the growth of the students in front of them, and ask themselves, along with their evaluator, questions like, "What can I do to get kids to achieve more, to get more growth? How can I get more out of the classroom experience with the students?"
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sawyer, is there a question?
You were mentioning that the data comes strictly from M-CAS?
The growth number currently comes from M-CAS.
And being that that's only math and ELA, and every, you know, so many years, three years or so, science, is science even being counted, let alone social studies, music, art, technology, all the other areas?
Everything is, they're, the state's asking us to measure growth in every subject we teach.
But again, the data that you have is from M-CAS, which is only math and ELA.
Right. They're charging us with producing valid and reliable data to come up with our own growth number for each.
Beyond M-CAS?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. And hence the name District Determined.
What about the subjects that, for which there's still M-CAS now, and for however long there is?
For those, every educator's going to have two DDMs, they have to have a minimum of two. If you're in an M-CAS subject, the M-CAS growth number is one of your district-determined measures.
Okay.
And then we've been given the freedom to choose another one.
Okay. But then in the other subjects, there would still be two?
There are still two.
And they'd just both be true DDMs?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, I think you're not, you had more to talk about, I think.
Well, needless to say, this is a very large undertaking.
Yeah.
If we want to do this well, to both comply with the state and then having, have a meaningful outcome for students and teachers, we really need to devote a lot of our school year next year, our PD time, to this, to this task. So therefore, that's why it takes up two of the four goals of, you know, of the school improvement plan. So two of the goals of the school improvement plan are to both administer these DDMs and start getting baseline data for teachers. But then the secondary goal is to really look at them as colleagues, to make sure that these numbers we're getting are meaningful and they lead to improved instruction, not just kind of a shell game of numbers.
Sure.
So those are two of the basic goals in the curriculum planning and assessment and professional culture. And the third goal that I'm going to talk about is kind of a counterweight to both of those initiatives, in that I think a lot of the folks at high school feel this kind of relentless focus on measurement of students might be taking away a little bit of the educational experience. And especially in the ILT, they really felt that we might, we have to, if we only focus on DDMs and numbers and data, we're going to lose a little of the soul of the classroom. So the counterweight goal in the teaching of students is we want to measure more student-centered activities in the classroom as we go about our learning walks for next year.
Could you give an example of what might, what would be a student-centered practice that someone walking through a building might see?
You know, a teacher at the board lecturing, you know, chemistry, that would be a teacher-centered activity, the sage on the stage, that old kind of thing. When I go into a chemistry classroom and I see students coming up with the labs they're going to try to use to determine, you know, compositions of molecules, whatever it is, when the students themselves aren't just doing the lab out of like a recipe book, but thinking like, "What am I trying to find out?", and then designing the labs themselves, and then testing those labs in the lab, that's more of a student-centered activity. I don't know if I gave a great example there. I can speak to one that I saw from one of our relatively new teachers. He was teaching exponential growth theory. And I, as a former math teacher, I was the sage on the stage with the overhead projector. I put the, put the examples on the projector, the kids would take down the examples, they'd ask some questions, maybe we'd do a little bit of group work, maybe a little bit of homework practice, and then we'd have the quiz or test. This teacher took his entire class to the computer lab in the library. He made them research their dream home, a home that they wanted to buy in 10 years. Could be in Arizona, Florida, it could be in, you know, in Attleboro, wherever the case may be. And so then they brought that information back to the classroom, they had all the particulars on the house that they wanted to buy, and then he gave a real-life example of a home that he purchased in October, and the decision-making process between getting a 30-year mortgage and getting a 15-year mortgage, and then he had students go to the board, he had one student compute it based on a 30-year mortgage, and had another student base, compute it based on a 15-year mortgage, and he showed them the tremendous amount of money differentiation between what you pay for a home if you pay for it over 30 years, and what you pay for a home when you pay for it over 15 years. And so then.
I hope he made the right decision, because that'd be a hard, that'd be a tough place to find out, that he just took a bath.
Yeah. But then he made them go back, each individual student go back and buy their home based on a 15-year mortgage and based on a 30-year mortgage. So that is much more student-centered rather than the way that I would have taught it, you know, 15 years ago.
True. And Mr. Landekas and Mr. Clark, at any point, if you have any comments on the differences that you've observed, don't hesitate. Mr. Tyler?
Yeah, I just want to comment on that principal room for a second. First of all, I remember that process with the mortgage, very scary when you actually do the number. I think one thing you said, and I'm glad to see the teacher thinking outside of the box at the moment, I think, but one comment you said kind of ticked me back, took the whole classroom to the computer lab. So this is where we're lacking in Abro. You know, it's, glad that we have the lab, I guess, but realistically, this should be done in a classroom, you know, and, and then we keep beating on this drum, but, I mean, all these goals that you have are very achievable, and readily achievable with the great teachers and administrators we have in Abro, but the technology is holding us back so bad on this stuff that I don't know if we'll ever be able to meet these goals if we don't have that, I don't.
You know, when the day comes that we have Wi-Fi throughout the building, this was a discussion that Mr. Sawyer and I were involved in in a different venue, but we administered a survey a couple of weeks ago to be able to get some very valuable data that we need for an initiative that we're working on. And so when I put the survey together, I put the survey together based on a QR code, which, you know, most people know as a barcode that you can use a smartphone and it automatically pulls the survey up, or they could, if they had any trouble with the QR code reader, they could just type in the URL. And then we offered a few paper copies in advisory, and we were very surprised at the number of students who wanted the paper copies, because they didn't want to cut into their data plan. So if we had Wi-Fi throughout the building, then they would have no problem using their own device. And I know Mr. Sheen's talked a lot about bring-your-own-device initiatives, and, you know, whether it's my tablet here, or whether it's, you know, Max's Droid, or Brandon Smart, his iPhone, if they get onto a student Wi-Fi network, then you're right, we don't have to waste the instructional time walking to the lab, looking up, you know, that dream home. They just, they find their dream home right on their smartphone. So that is something that will help us significantly, you know, once it comes to fruition.
If you, I think there are a couple of the goals, if you want to just run through them.
I think I got to the three of the four major highlights, and if you have any questions or if you haven't answered, any more questions?
Any other questions or comments?
I have the fourth goal.
Oh, I see, I got you. I thought, I thought Mr. Connor was just deciding he had kind of, you know, three out of four, three out of four in bad, so. Sure, okay, Mr. Rooney?
So our fourth goal is, it's actually the third in the list, but it's family and community engagement, and we had, we had some very strong correlations to success from our whole.
from our whole school improvement plan at this point last year and this school improvement plan for this year. There were some areas, you know, whether it be mathematics in past or things like that, that we definitely needed to continue to focus on. But one of the ones that we felt was the most successful was our family and community engagement, where we went through Aspen and we were able to incorporate the bulk email system, so that rather than rely on a School Connects robocall to be able to get information out to parents, which in many cases is a home phone number, and if we have a pipe burst at 11:30 in the morning, most parents aren't getting a robocall at their home number. So, the fact that we were able to build a database of over 3,000 emails to be able to send out information in a more timely fashion, and also information that you can, you can access at your convenience. You know, if, if your family's in the middle of maybe the one meal that they get together for the week, and then Bill Burmey calls about the penny drive, it's, you know, it's kind of a, it's kind of a deterrent to the, to the family time. So, we also have a tremendous presence on Facebook, Twitter. We're very appreciative of our partnership with Sun Chronicle and AACS, and we're putting a lot of good, good news out there to, you know, to engage our families. But one of the things that, you know, my leadership team feels philosophically is that, you know, the education, especially at the high school level, is a strong partnership between the families, students, and the staff. And for whatever reason, when students matriculate out of middle school and they come into high school, I think it's the fact that, you know, folders don't go home with notes in backpacks and things like that. There becomes a stronger disconnect between, between the school and the families. And, you know, I'm fortunate enough that, you know, I'm at the age where my children have been high school age over the last six years. And so, I realize the importance of keeping the, the families engaged in the communication as much as possible. And one of those things that, you know, many high schools lack is some sort of a formalized parent-teacher organization. You know, the PTOs in our elementary and middle schools are very strong. They're not always quite as successful in the high school level, and that, part of that is because of that disconnect. So, one of our goals is to form a PTO of sorts, which is called the Blue Pride Ambassadors Club. And, but the Blue Pride Ambassadors Club is going to stretch beyond just being a parent organization. We want to bring in as many constituencies as possible. We want staff members, we want parents obviously, and we want community members, including but not limited to, to our alumni. So, that is something that will give us a vehicle to tie in a lot of the initiatives that we have at the high school that have been successful but need to be more successful. I might give you one example. We have a group of parents who do an excellent job of putting together an all-night graduate, after-graduation celebration. It is a very healthy way for the class of 2014, in this case, to get together one more time. They're safe, because they're not out on the roads, you know, on a Friday night. And that is only as successful as the amount of volunteerism and the amount of donations that they receive. And I've been very fortunate in the last couple of years to have a really dynamic group of parents working on that. But if the Blue Pride Ambassadors Club becomes more formalized, then there are subcommittees of the ambassadors club that can harness a lot more resources and harness a lot more energy for fundraising purposes, for volunteerism and things like that. So, you know, I'm very excited about the possibility of this and, and just more ways that we can harness the very positive energy that, that we've been feeling about out of our high school as of late.
Thank you. Thank you both, to Mr. Connor and Mr. Rooney. Any questions or comments, Mr. Storrs?
I do want to say, as a parent of a high school student, your communication level is outstanding, absolutely outstanding. I've heard this from other parents as well, so I want to commend you on that. The only question I did have in looking at school improvement plan, that the prerequisites for certain classes is a very important thing that's on the agenda. So I was surprised that I didn't see that incorporated.
Coming on that basis, I'd be happy to. You know, the prerequisites are going into the handbooks. They are becoming policy. So, to a certain extent, that goal is achieved.
Very good. Okay, great. Thank you.
Check mark. Yes, well, again, thank you for, for the presentation. I think particularly we were talking about the, the importance of family engagement at the high school level. I imagine that one of the ways that we would identify as a way of making that goal easier to attain is doing everything we can to build as strong of relationships as we can at the elementary and middle school level as well. And so, particularly the ambassador program seems sort of to be a new initiative that I think would have a tremendous amount of value, a real potential to have a positive impact. If it is something that perhaps there could be some inter-district collaboration on it, maybe, it may be something that we can find a way to have an impact in the earlier grades as well. And hopefully through that, we'll have that many more sign-ups for these Blue Pride ambassadors when they get, when they get to the high school. So, thank you again, and we look forward to seeing you answer. And actually, Mr. Rooney, why don't you stay put for one second, because I believe you have a request of the school committee related to Mr. 1415 school year. Thank you, Mr. Connor.
We would appreciate the committee's consideration of a graduation date for the class of 2015 to be Friday, June 12, 2015, at 6:00 PM, weather permitting, at Tozer Cassidy Field.
Okay. And so, are there any questions about this? This is a somewhat routine matter that comes before the committee. There's a tremendous amount of logistical considerations, and it's a date that needs to be set. So, and it will be nice weather that day, I assume?
It's the plan.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the administration's request of setting the date for the Attleboro High School commencement to be June 12, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just add that, that hopefully the weather is nice. But I think the change going from the mid-afternoon thing and whatever, we had a lot of heat exhaustion years ago and a lot of logistical problems. So I think it was a very wise move on the part, and hopefully we continue that.
Mr. Rooney?
I did want to just make a note that this year's graduation is June 6. And so, this date that we are proposing is roughly a week later. My own daughter, who is in the class of 2015, is probably not going to be thrilled about the fact that we are, in a sense, tacking on one more week to the, to the senior year. There are two reasons for that. First of all, just from a pure teaching and learning standpoint, we tend to lose days because of snow. And so, the, you know, one could argue, although the, you know, sophomore seminar does talk a lot about junior year and things like that, every ounce of preparation that we can give our seniors before they move on to being college and career-ready is important. But also, we want to make sure that we are as close to compliance with state regulations for the number of days between graduation and the proposed end of the school year for the underclassroom. So, we're in one of those cycles where if we keep going with the first Friday, you know, we'll end up being 21 days before the end of the, you know, proposed end of the...
We appreciate the foresight with regard to that. Okay, any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. And Mr. Landacast, Mr. Clark, that means you're officially lame ducks, I think, because we've set your, your successor's graduation, but that's it. Okay, our, our final item on the new business agenda is discussion with regard to the after-school transportation. Mr. Rose, if you could join the committee?
And this matter was discussed briefly, as I understand it, the finance subcommittee meeting on April 16th, and then came up again, again briefly at our April 30th meeting. But as I understand it, effective May 1st, we have suspended the after-school bus because of the savings that were identified. And so, the two questions, the two principal questions that I posed to the administration and asked them to be prepared to respond to tonight is, first, what is the scope of the impact of this decision in terms of how does it, what impact is it having on after-school programs? And I understand that to some degree you can't predict that, because you don't know who's going to carpool and have no effect. And what is the savings that has been identified? But as part of the, the first part of that question, how much longer were these, were the buses scheduled to go and how many programs are affected? That, that's what I think the committee needs to know to sort of get a reminder on that. There are, as I've expressed to the superintendent and to the administration on April 30th, some concerns with regard to how this was communicated. I don't know that we necessarily need to rehash that at the moment, other than to just say that there were some serious concerns. So, scope of the impact and estimate, estimated savings?
I, I have the information that you requested, Mr. Murphy. One of the other first questions that you also asked, if you recall, was, did we in fact pay due diligence with regard to this decision? And I think that was answered at the last meeting by which you received this copy of what the nine line items are for transportation, and you saw that that was the only line item that in fact was in the black at the time, and is the only way that you could have taken money than, than from other line items that were put further in the red.
Yep.
The second piece was that, what was the impact on the schools? And I received this information directly from the principals. So let me take it school by school. So in Coelho School, there is no need for any late buses after May 8. And the two days of this week, of the 6th and the 8th, which were MCAS preparation and tutoring, those buses in fact were paid for by a grant program anyways. That's why we ran the buses this week. Those were not paid for by our regular transportation budget. The principal also said that the after-school teacher stipends and programs and so forth have also been exhausted, so therefore there was really no need for any buses, after-school buses for the remainder of the school year. As a matter of fact, Coelho's after-school bus runs last year were actually postponed or canceled on April 25. With regard to Brennan, the late buses would in fact be used for the band and choral program or students. And currently, parents now are transporting the students after-school back home. Those are scheduled to run until June 12.
The programs are scheduled to run?
The program itself is scheduled to run until June 12.
Okay.
But currently, the program is still running, but parents are picking up their kids after school.
Okay, but up until May 1st, they were taking the bus?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay.
With regard to Warm Sutter, the program is, is different. Oh, by the way, with regard to Brennan, the after-school buses were canceled last year or in not need on May 9.
Okay. I just, I want to respond just briefly to the comments about last year, because they, when I posed the initial question, that was the response of the administration with regard to when we suspended the service last year.
Just as an comparison.
But, you know, the, the, one of the concerns that this committee has expressed in the past is that we haven't prioritized the after-school programs to the degree that we should. And so, that was true a year, a year ago as well. And we didn't, and again, this is, this is a part of the responsibility of the governing body, but if the proper preparation wasn't made, and the buses suspended earlier than they should have last year, then that is not going to validate the decision this year. And I, at the moment, as I've said to the administration multiple times, I'm not second-guessing the decision, but I do think it's one that the committee needs more information on. And if we get more information, we may second-guess the decision. You know, we would certainly reserve that right. But for the moment, we just need to know when it is. But I understand it, it ended in the, about the first week of May for all three schools. I have serious questions as to why that's the case, but they're not, it's questions for tonight.
And, and I can't answer those questions.
Well, you certainly can.
Because I did not build this budget, and I did not, was not involved in the discussion about after-school buses and programming. The Warm Sutter is different than the other two. Warm Sutter offers their intramural program and their art club, and both are affected. Approximately 20 students per day. Fifth and sixth grade students participate in intramurals each week. And the other day of intramurals, the seventh and eighth grade, about 20 students as well are involved in the intramural program. An additional 10 students are also involved per day with regard to the art program.
Okay, so what's their total impact there?
Forty, 60 students throughout the course of the week.
All right. Enrolled in the program, but not necessarily taking the bus, correct?
On the average, that's the amount of students who in fact take the bus.
Really?
Yes. That's what I was told today.
Okay.
Okay. Both programs are scheduled to end on, at the end of May. They do not go into June.
Okay.
To answer your question with regard to, I think this was a question, if not, I'm, I'm going to provide you with the information if, if it means anything to you. To continue the bus program for the middle school that would affect Warm Sutter and Brennan Middle School with regard to band and chorus, you have an approximate cost of $2,850.
For the year?
For the remainder of their program for this year.
Okay. Was there not a number of $24,000 that was identified?
Yes. In the budget, there is a number in excess of $24,000 budgeted for after-school buses. That in fact, that money is still there. That, that was underutilized throughout the course of this school year.
Okay, so, we're talking about money that's encumbered for potential runs that aren't, but was never going to be used?
That's correct.
Correct. Can I jump in?
Oh.
The answer is yes, Mr. Chair. The reason is Brennan Middle School, for example, usually only will use one bus.
Right.
Although that's not the budget.
Frankly, I mean, we, a couple issues here. One, you know, this, I'm just, my, this, my individual opinion, I don't think we've historically done a good enough job to develop the robust program that the middle school should have. I know the superintendent has, has essentially made a similar comment. So that's one reason. But it's also important to note, and I know I've heard Ms. Saltzman say this before, that because of where Brennan is situated, they have a higher Walker population. I assume we still use the term Walker?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, yeah, that's part of why they haven't needed as many.
Correct.
But, so we're, what we're talking about here is a budgetary impact of $2,800?
Twenty, yes.
With $2,800, the service could continue as it would have. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay. And is the, with regard to the scope of the impact, are we certain that Coelho Middle School is not in need of this service?
That's what he said today.
Okay. And so the $2,800 does not include services that Coelho is not requesting? Is that clear?
That's correct.
Okay. And we're talking 60 students at Warm Sutter who take this, who utilize this service on a regular basis and are involved in art and athletic programs?
Yes.
And at Brennan Middle School, it's mostly music programs, and yet, and the approximate number of students?
I didn't have that, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. But if it's a choir, it's not, it's solo class, right? So there's got to be multiple.
Right.
Okay. All right. I think that, my, my next question is, if we were to restore this service, are we in a situation in which it can be monitored closely on a weekly basis? And if the administration determines that $2,800 is no longer feasible, although at that point it would be less, obviously, because it would be monitored on a weekly basis, that if $2,800 becomes a relevant figure, the service could be suspended? And if also as part of restoring the service, we could communicate to the community that this, that this service is, we have a tenuous grip on this service, and it could cease on, on short notice. Not as short as last time, but short notice. Is that a fair statement?
Yes. Quite honestly, it was this administrator's point that we announced to the city council and, well, in fact, announced to the city council and the mayor's office and so forth, that we were 59, and to the school committee just less than a week ago, that we're $59,000 in the red, and, or in deficit. So, for us to continue, knowing that fact, and for us to continue to operate in the red, to me, was unconscionable without the committee's direction as to, do you want to continue that service? The only piece that was in the black, do you want to continue that service for $2,800? Again, knowing what the deficit was, so...
Yeah. And that's an important point, and I appreciate you bringing that question to the committee. My question is, if we had, you know, we, the last, at last count, we had identified a savings, a deficit of $59,000. Every $2,800 helps, but that's hardly offsetting that issue. Where are we with regard to identifying savings necessary in the rest of the budget? And I, just to be clear, I know committee members have very strong feelings about using eligible funds for ineligible expenses. I share the concern, but we've, I think, discussed that issue at length on April 30. Where are we? Are you comfortable that, that, that those funds will be funded? Are, are you comfortable that, 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 that those funds will be found to offset that deficit?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Tyler?
I think she might have been first.
I'm sorry, Mr. Withers.
Um, well, my recollection at the April 30th meeting was that the decision was made because after-school programs running May 1st, that it was going to save $24,000 and that's why the decision was made. Now it's June 12th, the end of May, and it's $2,800. What, where's, what happened?
I'm sorry, before we do though, Mr. Withers, I just want to clarify one comment. The administration never explicitly said that the programs would end on May 1st. I said that based on the information I received from the administration when I posed the questions, which is the information we discussed a few minutes ago, that the precedent was at the end around the first week of May. I made that representation to the committee. So I just want to be clear that that assertion, that, that came from me, not, not, not the administration.
And our intention, Mr. Withers, was in fact to continue our late bus runs this week because it was MCAS driven, uh, and they weren't coming, it, it wasn't placing us further in deficit because those bus, uh, runs were in fact paid from a grant.
Right. So I'm sorry, Mr. Withers, if you could respond to Mr. Withers.
Sure. I'll, I'll be, I'll try to be very brief. Two different threads. First, easy one, 2,850.
Yep.
The average that we're spending per week is $950.
Correct.
Each late bus run is $95 or 10 runs per week. The Coelho School and the Warm Sutter School usually use two buses and the Brennan School usually uses one, five buses times Tuesday and Thursday comes to the 10 runs or the 950. If we add on for three weeks, we're looking at 2,850. So that's where that three-week period comes in, in the 2,850. But the important question you ask is where the heck did the $24,000 come from? And the answer is, in the purchase order that got prepared, and this is a rough-up from this year's purchase order, we built in the funding for a total of 432 runs. We didn't need all 432 runs. We knew full well as of a week, two weeks ago, that we're going to have some extra money. It's not because we're trying to rob Peter to pay Paul, it's just that the amount of, and we're going to do the exact same thing next July or August, 432 runs. But the reality is not all those runs got used and that excess is approximately the $22,000.
Okay. Mr. Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Schin. I, I think it was like two and a half, three months ago, we sat here and we did a budget transfer as a committee. We allowed a budget transfer as a committee, uh, into transportation. And at that time, I asked the question, if that would in any way, shape or form affect after-school busing? The answer was no, in no way, shape or form. I am not happy about this whatsoever. Okay, we, again, we've been taking money out of net school spending and spending on other things, but yet when we have something that actually does have a, a value to it, like something like this, it's reduced for what is a minimal cost of 2,850. So I, I think what I would suggest, Chairman Murphy, not to be out of order, but I'd like to make a motion, uh, to continue all after-school busing, uh, to notify all students and families of this decision if it's reached and applied to the committee.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. Uh, and is there a discussion?
Yeah, we're talking, that's only going to affect Warm Sutter, correct?
No.
Oh.
Coel, Brennan.
Oh, okay. All right, so that's a good point. And, Mrs. Kelsey?
Nope.
Okay. Um, all right. If, if we, if we vote on this motion and that the after-school services are reinstated, uh, that is certainly going to affect the Warm Sutter programs identified by the superintendent. It's certainly going to tech, uh, include the Brennan services. Um, I, I would ask, and again, I, I understand that the, the school's already been spoken for, but, um, if we could just check one more time to make sure that there's no, there are no issues at Coelho because I do not want to approve a motion and find out that somebody didn't know about a program or whatever.
May I do it this way, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I, I will ask, uh, Mr. Bowles, as the principal of the school, if in fact you had the luxury of having after-school buses, again, specifically, what would you be using them for?
Yeah, I mean, we'll also not, have to know how much it costs because for some reason that.
Right.
The trip, the drive to South Attleboro, you know, spike, makes the cost spike to close to what was originally reported, that could be an issue.
No.
The 2,850 included Coelho, right?
True.
It included two buses for Coelho a week.
Sorry for the confusion. Can I, can I chip in here?
You do.
Sorry for the confusion. $95 per day per bus, 10 runs per week, two runs per day for Warm Sutter and Coelho and one run for Brennan. So pretty much five late bus runs every Tuesday and Thursday. That comes to 950, times three weeks, comes to 2,850. So yes, what you said, Mr. Withers, that 2,850 includes the buses or if they're needed for Coelho.
Sure. Okay. All right, so the motion's on the floor to reinstate after-school transportation services. I am going to offer another motion after that, but, um, is there any further discussion on this?
I, I do want to verify one thing before I start hearing from parents out of Coelho. I want to ensure not only that, you know, there is no opportunity for after-school programs, I want to make sure that no after-school programs were shortened, no after-school programs were canceled in any way, shape or form because of the lack of the.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the full scope, I think, I think that's what I was asking when I asked for the scope of the impact, so hopefully that's not the case.
I had asked that question today and the principal said to me, no, no programs were canceled.
Or shortened? Or have we not verified that?
No.
If they were shortened permanently, I would say that's canceled.
They were not shortened and they were not canceled. That was what I was told.
But the, the point is valid. We've, we've obviously got to make sure about that stuff, but I think there seems to be a pretty broad consensus on this, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Tyler. Thank you, uh, Mr. Schin and to the administrators. I think there are, uh, just a couple of things. I, I would like to, uh, make a motion that, um, the financial implications of the service be monitored closely and a communication be made by the superintendent to the chairman, uh, on a weekly basis articulating the feasibility of continuing the service for the following week.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Um, and obviously if the superintendent articulates that the administration has determined that the service is no longer feasible, even if it is just $2,800, that decision will be made immediately to suspend the service. Um, and I think we all, we all understand that. But, yes, Mr. Schin?
Um, just for the record, that you will not be hearing from me this week because all of those buses have no impact on this budget. Uh, you will hear from me the, on a weekly basis from that point on.
Understood. And then, um, two other points. With regard to the communication of this issue, uh, Ms. Sawyer asked, um, at our April 30th meeting whether or not the communication had been made to the building communities about the cancellation. Uh, I understand, you know, that, that the need to sort of flip-flop on that, but I would ask that the communication be made promptly at the building level that the service is going to be restored and make sure that faculty members who may be, uh, serving as advisors know that that service is going to be back up and running. And obviously, parents, uh, need to know to make sure that they, they can make their plans. And in Brennan's case, uh, it sounds like all the way to June 12th, um, which is a considerable amount of time for, for families to be, to be making those arrangements. Um, okay. And the, the last point before we move on, um, you know, this, this committee has convened multiple subcommittee meetings, uh, talking about, um, where we are with regard to after school programs and where we need to go. The superintendent has spoken very eloquently about the impact of after-school programming on the overall educational experience. Uh, my sense, particularly during the orientation, was that this was a committee that felt that this was an instrumental part of education and, and that's becoming more so as the traditional school day fills up with, uh, so many of the other things that we've talked about tonight and on other evenings. Um, and so, we, we have to get to a point, and I know, you know, we've talked a lot about the need for us to adopt a strategic plan. Part of the re, part of the problem when you, in the absence of a strategic plan is that when we come to situations like this, we don't have, the committee nor the administration have any official, officially sanctioned guidance as to how these discrete decisions fit into the overall context as to, uh, what we're trying to do. Um, and I, I think it's important to note that. That's work that this committee's going to do and, and we're going to do it aggressively and we're going to do it in collaboration with our, with our administrators and our, our educators. In the meantime, uh, I would like to request, and I think I'll ultimately make a motion to, to request that the administration between now and the first day of school, prepare a, a comprehensive report for this committee identifying where we need to go with regard to after-school programs in, in the opinion of our, of our professionals. Um, it's, we've, we've talked about it at length. We understand that, that the educational experience has changed and the school day is different. Uh, and I think the, the premise that I've understood it to be from the educators who I've had the pleasure to work with these last few years, is that we need greater flexibility in terms of how we see these things and, and what impact that they have. So before I formally make the motion, is that, does the administration feel that that's a reasonable request?
I think a reasonable, I think it's very reasonable. Uh, it's not something that I haven't done before, but at the same time, it's, um, the overarching, uh, there are many overarching elements associated with this, including negotiations.
Yep.
Including teacher stipends, including, uh, different materials, including transportation costs, so forth. Uh, um, we certainly can prepare that, but we're in the process of some of those other things right now.
And it's the first day of school, months away, we won't have needed to.
But the budget for transportation would have to be amended now.
And that's why, as is often the case with discussions at this committee, you know, next year, it's going to look a lot like this year. I mean, that, that is the reality of the work that deliberative bodies do, but we're not going to get to a point where it looks better until we start planning a, a couple of years out. And I think that one of the issues, every time this comes up, we fixate on the transportation part of it and the need for budgetary flexibility to provide for that. Well, it will be much easier as the advocates for education in this community to go bef, to the, to our city officials and our state officials and private entities for that matter and say, "We need financial support because we're trying to do X, Y, and Z." Right now, we're just running around saying we need more money. If anyone's ever met someone running around saying we need more money, you, the first question is usually, "Why?" And right now, I don't think this district has done a, a good enough job to articulate the potential difference that this can make. So as long as, you know, I don't expect a plan, a report to be issued in September and then it to be implemented on September 2nd. That's not what we're looking for. We're looking for a long-term, sustainable impact. And I just want to make sure before we instruct you to do that, that, that's in line with your expectations.
I just want you to understand there were other pieces that actually, we, although it's in the 12th hour, we might be able to, you know, achieve that.
Yeah, and those, those are discussions that we have, but in terms of the big impact, you know, shifting a culture, it takes, it takes a long time. Takes longer to shift a culture than it does to decorate a conference room.
Maybe we can do some of the pieces that, uh, toward the next, uh, school year anyways.
I, I hope so.
Many of them.
My, my priority is long-term, sustainable.
Yeah, okay.
But the faster we get these kids into after-school programs, like, the faster I'll stop, you know, bickering about. Until then, it's not going to happen. So, uh, I'll make a motion to instruct the administration to prepare a comprehensive report, uh, discussing after-school programs and possibilities in the Attleboro School District.
Second.
Any further discussion? This is.
Yeah, I, I do want to say, uh, obviously, the budget we're working on now, that we know that we're in a deficit for, uh, is impacted not necessarily by the transportation piece, but by everything else that Mr. Schin just talked about, the stipends that are associated with the teachers staying after to support those programs. And that has to be for next year, part of the budget discussion. As far as the comprehensive plan for the future, I'm, I'm right there with you, I agree with it. Um, a big piece of it for me, I would want to see is, I want to make sure that all schools are effectively getting the same opportunity. Um, you know, if, if intramural sports and all this other stuff is happening at one school like Warm Sutter, but not necessarily in the same way, to the same level for the other schools, I want to understand why. And I think that should be part of.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that and I think that's been an important part of the discussion at the subcommittee level and why we brought the, and I know Mr. Sawyer has, has been at two of those meetings where the, uh, building administrators have been brought in to try to foster a conversation amongst, uh, you know, the building administrators to figure out if they're doing something in one building, can you replicate it at another? Um, Mr. Schin?
Could I just make one recommendation to the committee that this comprehensive plan is a K to 8 plan and, and does not involve the high school because the high school obviously is, is an entity unto itself and it's a different animal?
Uh, yeah, I don't think the motion specified middle school, so.
You mean high school?
Definitely didn't specify high school.
A direction of K to 8?
Yeah, should be K to 8, I agree.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion, opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so, uh, thank you for that. And, uh, Mr. Schin, if we could just confer later to make sure that we're on the same page with regard to the communication going on at the building level? Okay. Um, moving on, that is, that concludes our new business agenda and our subcommittee reports. We'll start with our policy subcommittee, Mr. Withers.
Uh, the next policy subcommittee meeting will be next Monday, May 12th at 6:30 PM. That concludes my report.
Well done, Mr. Withers. Our curriculum instruction subcommittee report from Ms. Singer.
Uh, our next curriculum and subcommittee meeting is next Tuesday, May 13th at 6:30. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Singer. And finally, our finance facilities and procurement subcommittee report, Mr. Larson.
I don't know what we're doing, all right? [laughter] Meeting on April 15th here for about three hours. Um, we have approximately 10 motions to come through, so, uh, indulge your, your patience. Uh, the first motion is to grant the authorization of the business manager to transfer first-two-digit accounts from other first-two-digit accounts, stipulating that he will communicate to the school committee the request of the transfer, including the individual for whom originated and provide a copy of the transfer after it's been completed to the next finance subcommittee meeting, the annual clearing of accounts in June notwithstanding. For those of you that are new on the, um, well, if I can get a second.
Second.
All right. Um, part of the discussion in this, because of the frequency of when we meet, under the current way things happen, the business manager, or any business manager, the way the, it's written, can transfer, uh, money within different accounts that have the same first-two digits in the account number. Because of how we're, our meeting cycle is going, the proper procedure for that is that the request comes from the business manager of the finance subcommittee, we approve it, and that goes to the full committee. Part of that timetable can take over a month, just the way we're meeting sometimes. And so what we're looking to do is to streamline some of the process and especially when we get down towards, uh, year-end, so that we can start moving money from accounts that have overages into accounts that have deficits. Um, as all of you know, at the end of June, or at the end of the school year, uh, we can't have any accounts with, uh, with deficits in them. Uh, so this would allow, uh, the current business manager and any other business manager going forward to start doing some of the housekeeping. Prior to June, we'd still stipulate that the business manager needs to bring these authorizations to the finance subcommittee and then consequently to the full committee, uh, so they're aware of it. Uh, and also, uh, we have asked, because part of the conversation we had, the subcommittee, was the process of checks and balances, uh, when these transfers are originated, how they're communicated. Uh, so part of the, the motion and part of our request is that the business manager would have to provide us, um, not only the, obviously the motion that, the, excuse me, the, um, transfer that had been done, uh, but we also wanted to know who had asked, uh, for the transfer and why. So, any other discussion?
One quick, I know in years past, towards the end of the year, school year, uh, to One quick, I know in years past, towards the end of the year, school year, to allow the business manager to close out the budget, authorization was normally given for effectively total transfers, and again, with the committee being notified, are we not looking at doing that now?
No, we're going to keep that, that's the part where it's June notwithstanding, and basically for the year-end transfers, we don't have to have a copy of the origin or we don't have to have a copy of.
And that'll be coming to us later.
That will come to us later as part of the year-end closing report.
Very good.
So we'll still see it, we just won't see each, we won't have the backup for each individual line, because every line is going to have the same backup closing out the year. So, are there any other questions or concerns? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained?
Obstained.
Obstained? Yeah. Okay. Second motion, make a motion to approve a payment for last year's invoice to Heartland's Payment System for $74.60 and 20 cents.
Second.
As part of your backup, this is an invoice that came through for Heartland's Payment. I'm going to let Tom give you a little bit more detail on it, but it's a past-year invoice, so it has to come through us. If we approve it, then it needs to go to the city council for their approval.
Yes.
Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. As many of you might know, when the kids go through the food line, there is what's called a point-of-sale system that the folks at the cash register have. It's a software program that we get from Heartland and we pay for each year. I found out about this invoice from Whitson's that apparently had never been paid, and that's why we're trying to address it now. But it's payment for the software program for the clerks or the cashiers of the cash register called point-of-sale, so that when they key in a person's, when the individual keys in his or her code, a name pops up and we find out whether the person's on free or reduced lunch and so on. That service was not paid for, and this will fix that issue.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion passes. Similar, make a motion to approve a payment of last year's invoicing to Whitson's Food Service for $2,457.12.
Second?
Second.
Last year, we had, I believe it was a walk-in freezer.
Yes.
That had a power failure, and we had a series of food that spoiled. Mr. Rose, I'll let you elaborate.
Mr. Larson, you're absolutely right. Documentation's pretty straightforward. There was a walk-in freezer that just simply lost power, and because of that, the food spoiled. Whitson's knows that they have the ability to write that off, but that's a separate invoice, and that should not be, part of this is a positive, believe it or not, because that should not be part of the monthly invoices that we get from Whitson's every month as far as the staff and food and so on. This is different, this is separate, because this is replenishment because of the food loss. So it's a separate invoice, and this, the invoice date was 29 June, and to be very honest with you, it didn't get processed. I apologize, I wasn't aware of it, and I have, usually have a meet with Heather Whitson's about once every week, two weeks, she hooked up with me and said, "Tony, we got to get this invoice paid." But it's tied to a freezer having, losing power.
And again, this falls in the same category as, assuming that we approve, it needs to go to city council for payment because it's last year's invoicing.
Right, yes.
Mr. Tyler.
And this money's going to come out of the revolving fund account?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh.
The answer is, yes, we'll pay for it out of, it'll either be the revolving fund or it'll be the carryover account. It'll be one of the other. Yes, you're welcome.
What is it indicated in the contract with Whitson's regarding a situation of this nature?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Contract that we have with Whitson's.
Yes.
Does it cover in any way a situation of this nature, where they are utilizing our facilities, in this case, chiller.
Yes.
And something like this happens, which ultimately, the chiller is ours, it went bad, their food was spoiled. Anything indicated in the contract regarding something of that nature?
Yes, and that which is indicated is that, excuse me, the vendor has the ability, or has the right, to go to the client and ask for reimbursement for that which has got to get replaced. But again, the primary thing that's mentioned in the contract is that this is not part of the normal operating business, not part of the daily business, and if that's going to happen, it's got to be done separately. Now, if we want, thanks very much, Mr. Sheen, if we want to, we can play hardball, but this, because if we determine that, you know what this food loss really, it's not the school department's fault, it's Whitson's fault, and therefore, we're not going to pay the bill, then that's legit, and frankly, I never would have brought it to Mr. Larson and said we should, we really shouldn't pay for this. But in this particular case, because it's a loss of power, and it's part of simply an aging infrastructure, I don't think Whitson's was at fault in any way. And I know I'm repeating myself, I'm glad that they went, they took this particular path, which was a separate invoice for something that's unique, because it's not part of the normal operating business. So yes, it is in the contract, and they're implementing the contract, or they're following the rules in the contract by this invoice.
Mr. Sheen?
This isn't covered under Whitson's, is it covered under our own insurance in the school department for loss of food?
Was that your question?
No.
Well, you know what, that's a great follow-up question, I love it.
Okay, well, I'm glad I addressed your question.
We can look into that.
I can look into that. And we should have done it then, not a year-plus later. But, that's okay, can I, may I ask?
Certainly.
One other question regarding, the first one that was passed. If this, if we added a technology piece to Whitson's ability to see kids going through the line, is that part of their contract to begin with? We've made their program more efficient, why wouldn't they be taking that up? Did they get permission from us to go to a system of this nature that was going to cost us $6,400?
Yes.
In 2012?
Yes, yes, they did.
And what was the school committee's?
Well, part of the, I believe the answer to your question is yes, Mr. Sheen, because when Whitson's prepared their proposal, they explained, "This is how we're going to do this and this and this and this and this." And one of the things that they mentioned was point-of-sale, specifically, it's increase in technology and so on. I can go back and I'll check the contract, but they, this is, the reason why Whitson's can't take this expense on, the reason why they shouldn't, is because, quite frankly, it's part of the software for our school district and for our kids. It's not, it's not a software package that Whitson's buying for themselves, it's a software package that we're providing to Whitson's to use.
Okay, I just want to say, I don't want to get too bogged down in speculating about what is or is not in a contract that none of us have memorized, so I think these are all valid questions. I think that the committee will certainly entertain discussion about them in the coming weeks, but it's not going to happen tonight, so, Mr. Larson.
Any other questions on the Whitson's invoice request? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion passes? And we will look into the concerns that were voiced. Next motion is to approve the user fees as presented in the packets, inserting the 4% increase for the peer modeling program at the ELC.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? There's a lot of information to go through.
Just, the peer modeling program is a very important program to the district, it has a valuable impact, and we're grateful to everyone that is contributing to that program, and to the families who are enrolled in as well.
Any other comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Make a motion to approve the contract with CELT Internet Management for the FY15 and FY16 school years.
Second?
Any discussion? Information was in your material. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Abstained? Entertain a motion to retain Whitson's as food service vendor for the second of four option years that are in their contract, exactly FY15 school year. Thank you. Any discussion? Originally, just as a point of interest, they had one solid year, and then the current year that we're in is the first of four option years in the contract, so we're, we have the right to exercise those four options, and we're making the motion to exercise the second of the four option years, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Bill, I think you missed the crystal glass.
Yeah, we missed crystal glass.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to retain the contract of crystal glass for the option year for next school year.
Second?
Again, information was in your packet, if you have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion passes? All right, next, entertain a motion to accept the transportation report pending updates before the next school committee meeting.
Second.
All right, discussion. Mr. Rose, do you have anything you'd like to add at this time for transportation report?
Yes, very quickly, thank you very much, Mr. Larson. When we met last week, I handed out a report which showed the approximate $60,000 delta. There'll be a, I'll grab the latest and greatest MUNIS data this week and get it for the finance committee's meeting for a week on Wednesday, but the answer is right now, we're still at the same, in the same position of approximately $60,000 delta on top of the $170 that was identified earlier. And that's it, thank you.
And just as a point of interest for the rest of the committee, Mr. Rose and I are talking, I would say at least once, sometimes twice a week on this issue, and he and I have nothing better to talk about each other, so. Is there any other questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? And the last one is, make a motion to request the business manager authorized to prepare an RFP for the fire alarm service for next year. Again, this information was in your packets, RFP that we go up for provides a fire alarm service for the school system. Mr. Murphy?
If I missed this, I apologize, but is this district-wide or are there buildings where we've had some problems?
It's district-wide.
District-wide, okay, thank you.
Any other comments, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, as Mr. Rose said, our next meeting is May 14th, 7 o'clock in this room. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. The agenda does post, did post for an executive session to be held with regard to the labor negotiations. Frankly, there isn't new information to provide, so I think if committee members are okay with it, I think we'll skip the executive session for tonight. I would be remiss if I didn't offer one last reminder that there will be a public hearing tomorrow at City Hall at 7:00 p.m. I know at least most of the committee members do plan to attend, as well as representatives from our administration and each of our building communities, so we're grateful to the municipal council for hearing our views on that, along with the rest of the community, and until then, we will adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
We're going to get a number.